Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular scheduled public hearing of the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, we would like to invite you to stand with us if you choose to for a prayer by Ms. Bestin Smith and pledge by Mr. Carvin.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for such a beautiful day. We thank you for being our Creator, our Provider, and our Savior. Father, we thank you and help us to make the right decisions in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let it be to the flag of the United States of America and to the love for which it stands, one nation, united God, and with his will, we live for the goodness of our heart.
Thank you, Mr. Carvin. Thank you, Ms. Smith. We're going to cover a few preliminaries here as we go along for public hearing agenda items. If you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium right out front. For further notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box or hand it to our assistant near the podium when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor of. And then 10 minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, 10 minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the applicant can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on the case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is in deliberation, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. on tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddoMPC.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon requesting by, upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC's board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision depending on the location of the property and questions. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. All right, this particular time, we'll call for an approval of the minutes from the May 1 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carvin, second by Ms. Smith. All those in favor, please vote yes.
Would you vote by show of hands, Mr. Chair?
Can we, you got it, sugar?
It's not up on our screen.
All right, we'll vote by show of hands.
Mine voted, yours didn't vote.
It just says, "Mike unmuted requests to speak."
That's what mine said.
Can we just vote by show of hands, Mr. Chair?
I don't see what that's the problem. All those in favor, please raise your right hand or left hand. Motion's carried, thank you. All right, we'll move into our scheduled public hearings. Case number 19-302-P, special use permit, Cork and Cuts LLC.
Anybody speak?
Anyone here from Cork and Cuts? All right there. Got to get used to that name now. Give it your name, address, and zip code.
Candace Amadon, it's 1939 Southern Loop, Suite M.
And your last name again?
Amadon.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. At 71106.
All right, care to tell us what you plan on doing?
We are doing off-premise. It's got high alcohol, of course, the daiquiris, and then wanted spirits retail facility.
All right, board members, anyone having a question?
Just one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
How did she come up? We kind of understand the cork. We're trying to understand the cut.
Oh, sorry. Yes, so we will have fresh cut steaks. Yes, sir.
Fresh cut?
Yes, sir. Will be fresh cut steaks and like wine and, or wine and cheese, but they also deli meats.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, so come get you one.
What did you say it would be, deli meats?
Deli meats such as like pastrami, salami, yes, sir, prosciutto, those with the wine and the cheese and, you know.
Got you.
The tartuise boards, if I can ever say that right.
That was a topic of discussion earlier. Thank you for clearing that up.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Any more questions?
Are you going to sell tobacco, tobacco products?
We have applied for our tobacco license. It's something we'll probably expand to as far as like cigars and stuff, especially cigars. As of right now, we're just trying to get the alcohol and food in there. I did apply with the state, of course, you know, waiting on that, but I have, I have no desire to do it right now.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone care to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none, board members, what's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Remedy, second by Ms. Smith, to approve.
Mr. Chair, we're trying to get the voter machines to work properly.
There you go. Okay.
Please vote. There we go. Okay, good. Motion's carried, thank you, motion's approved. We'll call for case number 19-312-C, small planned unit development, We Care Ministries Outreach Program, Steeplechase Baptist Church. Anyone present?
Mr. Chair, based on the staff report and the inability of the staff to complete the process, we ask that you defer this case and continue it for 30 days.
Second.
It's been motioned that, by Mr. Carvin, second by Ms. Smith, that we defer and continue this case. All those, any questions?
Yeah.
All those, yes, sir.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Was the applicant unable to submit all the required documentation or what was the...
That was part of the problem, they were unable to submit all the documentation and required time, and they did not have enough for us to present the information necessary to you to allow you to complete the process. We did not want to shut the business down, we wanted to extend the time to allow them to get this in for next month.
Oh, okay, so, but if we leave it on the agenda, they can still continue to operate.
If you leave it on the agenda, they'll be back next month with everything you'll need to make a decision.
Very good, okay. I appreciate you guys thinking outside the box and allowing a business to continue because I'm sure these, whoever uses this for their children greatly appreciates not having to find other care for them, so that's all I have.
All right, any other comments or questions? Then we call for the vote. All those in favor of deferring, continue vote, yes. Motion's carried, thank you very much. We'll go to case number 19-314-C, Collins Used Auto Sales. Anyone here representing that particular company?
And again, Mr. Chair, the same problem existed on this application. In an attempt to continue to be ve- very business friendly in the city of Shreveport, they were unable to get all the information in for the staff to review the site plan and present recommendations to you, so we ask you to defer and continue this also.
Make a motion to defer.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Bestin Smith, a second by Mr. Carvin to defer and continue. Motion's carried, thank you very much. We'll move to case number 19-301-CAC, closure and abandonment, City of Shreveport.
Afternoon, members of the commission. My name is William Towton. I represent the Office of the City Engineer with the City of Shreveport. This closure and abandonment is another phase of the development by community development to provide apartment complexes in the area, and right now it's in the design phase. We're looking at closing that alley. Currently, there is a sewer line and a storm drainage system in there that may be relocated at the time of, of development, but until that time, we're going to retain a permanent utility servitude to provide for those utilities. If they relocate them during the design, then we'll release the servitude at that time. We polled the utility departments, we had no objections to this closure and abandonment.
Any questions for Mr. Towton?
Yeah, I have a question. You said the sewer line maybe, you're not too sure when you use the word maybe, there's where...
Okay, it's in the design phase, and right now it probably will be relocated at it, and it'll be done as part of the development deal. We did, we did do the block immediately to the northeast of this, and in that design phase, the sewer in that alley is being relocated. So until they get through design complete, I won't be able to tell you absolutely for sure one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How many, how many stories is the building?
It's multi-story, exactly how many units, I cannot tell you. I haven't seen those plans.
Yep.
Y'all, y'all may have seen them in their master plan sometime in the past when they first presented it to the MPC, but, but I couldn't tell you. Steven, do you know?
Three stories.
Three.
Three.
That answers your question, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, we'll entertain, well, anyone else speaking in favor of this request? Anyone speaking in opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Remedy, please vote.
To approve.
Motion's carried, it's approved. Item number 10, KC 24-19, Sartori Enterprises LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Tom Arseneau, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, that's in the Regent's Tower, 3471101. I represent the applicant. Now, let me give you a little, you, you know some history on this, let me give you the history of why we're back. The, this, this body, the original application was for a C3, C3 zoning change, it's currently zoned R17. That was, your recommendation was not to, not to do that. It went to the city council. Ms. Sartori has decided that she will back to a C2, and that was not considered by you in the previous hearing, so the city council sent it back for you to be able to consider that. After it was sent back, we filed an amended, an amended application to request a C2 zoning, so that's why it's back in front of you. The, the main, well, the driving factor behind C3 was an auto, auto rental, and that will not be a possible use under C2. So that's one thing, that's the major thing that is, that is different, is there will not be any auto rental, and if you, if you were to look at the, at the UDC and the uses auto rental of any kind, it's not even a, a special use permit issued for the C2, so it's, it's completely out of the question. The, the staff report still contains some of the language from the prior staff report, and so I wanted to make sure that you understood that there's no auto rental that is involved in this at all. I thought it would be interesting, and therefore I have compiled a, a list of the differences between uses and the things that are taken out as a result of the, the C3, so if I may, I'm, I'm glad to pass them out, or I'll let, let y'all pass them out. There, there are two, two different categories that are here that I think are important. One is the, one is the things that are available in a, in a C3 that simply aren't available in a C2, and that, that actually is the longer list, business support, contractor office, heavy retail, industrial artisan, industrial services, nightclub, those kinds of things are not permitted at all in, in a C2, but would have either been a permitted use or a possible special use permit use in the C3. The second one is an additional level of protection for certain uses. Most of these are probably not likely for this site regardless just because of the small size and its location, but in each of these cases, these uses would have been a use of right, a permitted use under a C3, but would require a special use permit under the, under the C2. So for reception facility, vehicle repair, so if, if these more dense uses were proposed, then the applicant would have to come back before you for a special use permit. So I think that that's a very significant thing for you to consider in the difference between the application now as a C2 as opposed to a C3. Now, the next thing I, and, and there is a favorable staff recommendation for the C2, for the C2 use. Although we are not, not here on a site plan because the, the Department of Transportation and Development doesn't, because this is residentially zone property, they are not required to give any, any advice about access. These are, you know, this is the, this is the intersection of two state highways, two four-lane state highways. So the access from East 70th, quite likely if you look at the way the land is located, and, and East Burke Coons, the, either one of those, DOTD has to approve the curb cut, and you can't apply for the curb cut until the zoning is changed, so. But the applicant has drawn up a possible site plan. I want to make it clear, this has not been submitted to MPC, it's not part of the application, but sometimes I, I know that you like to see, you like to see something that is, that gives an idea of what it would look like, so I think that maybe the easiest thing, if you can see, if I can put it on here, I have some copies for you, but I think the easiest thing may be, it may be too big, there you go, you can see it though. So the proposed entry that will be submitted to DOTD is on the far west end of the property, and the, all right. Do you have an elevation with you? No? All right, this is going to be an office, the, the spots that are there is planned for an office building. Obviously, the site plan will have to go before the DOTD, it will have to go before the MPC staff, so this is simply kind of a, a concept of what it, of what it would look like. So those are the issues that are there. We, we hope that you will give it positive consideration today and, and approve it so that we could go up to the city council. As you know, most of the uses in, in C2 are also uses in C1, and certainly, so there really is not going to be a whole lot of difference in, in the two, but she is requesting C2. This is going to be a building that will be seeking tenants, and so without knowing precisely what the, what the ultimate occupants of that building will be, they would prefer to have the C2 zoning with a little bit more possibilities in it than, than C1. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. You, you've probably been, been on the bus tour of both of this, both times, you've considered it before, and I don't want to belabor your meeting today, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and we respectfully ask for your support.
All right, sir, thank you very much.
What's the square foot of the building going to be? Do you know?
She says about 3,000 square feet.
And the number of parking required, Alan, on that 3,000 square foot building?
It depends on the use.
It depends on the use.
If it's medical and rental, rentable office like you proposed, do you have, ten? Okay. The curb cut is not going to be on Burke Coons at all, it's just going to be on 70th?
I can't, I, I can't tell you that the curb cut will, curb cutter cuts will be wherever DOTD says they'll be.
Yep.
I, I think if you look at the way this is situated with that intersection, just from my own experience, I would think that there would not be a, it was unlikely to be a curb cut on East Burke Coons because there's not as much frontage there and, and traffic sometimes stacks up. But those are, those are all site plan issues, and it, it will be, no, no, no. I, I reckon...
You're trying, you're trying to get this, but my deal is, and I know you have to have this before you go to DOTD, but more than likely that shared use of that existing driveway that may make you tag on to it, but if you're trying to take a left and go west on 70th across that five lanes, it's going to be hard to do at 8, 12, and 5.
Yes, sir, I would, I would suggest that even if the shared drive is there, that problem exists that are, that are right there. I do, we recognize the challenges of the site plan and DOTD, but we got, we got to get the horse first instead of the cart.
Mr. Carvin, as we shared upstairs, we are only voting on the rezoning of the property today. It's unfortunate that we allow site plan issues entering into this conversation, but we are only voting on, on the actual rezoning, and those issues will be dealt with, with Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, which is their priority.
I have, I do have some, I do have some experience with that, and I know that they're a tough customer, so we will see, but we, we can't even get there without the rezoning, Mr. Carvin.
I wish you all the luck.
Thank you very much.
I assume this is a, this is a one-story building?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I wasn't able, I do have an elevation I could show you. Again, this is...
No, no, it's okay. I was just curious about how many stories.
Yes, sir. I think if you get too much more square foot than that, this, this site will become too small.
Any more questions from board members? Anyone else care to speak in favor of this request?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone present care to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none, seeing none, board...
I make a motion to rezoning to C2.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Smith, a second by Mr. Remedy to zone the properties to C2 as recommended.
Stan, let me, let me be clear on this. The applicant's requesting C3?
C2.
Okay, because it says request R17 to C3.
That was the original.
And then it said remanded, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, okay. That's all questions. Second, I did, I seconded that.
Right, so this is to approve C2, right?
We're calling for vote to approve C2. Motion passes, thank you very much, board. At this particular time, our case number 19-341-C, Mr. Clark, would you care to introduce this individual?
I'm going to yield to a planner in charge of this, this ordinance amendment, Mr. Alan Baylor, let him explain it to you.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey, would you?
Yes, board, this chair, for clarity, we're asking these amendments to be broken down into three subcases concerning their particular use, and I'll just call them A, B, and C. A is for annexations, B is for billboards, and C is for wireless telecommunications. Subcase A, this, which is amendment one, this proposed language would regulate all annexation applications of five acres or more to be forwarded to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, who in turn will forward their recommendation to city council after a public hearing. All annexation applications less than five acres would be handled administratively by the executive director, who in turn would forward his recommendation to city council, so therefore only annexation cases five acres or more will have a public hearing at the MPC level. Subcase B, so currently there are three unbuilt pre-UDC billboards that are still active from May 2017. This amendment would allow any of those three permits to be canceled and surrendered to the zoning administrator for a one-to-one square footage credit towards the application of a new signed permit within 30 days of passage of this amendment at city council.
Mr. Chair? If we're going to, respectfully, if we're going to take these in three, we're going to vote on them, that's what you want us to do, is vote on them in three separate sections? I guess I'm a little simple minded. Could we take one case and then vote on and go to the next one in case, are we, are we getting public opinion on this? Are we getting comments from the public?
Yes.
Okay, can we handle that like a regular case?
Yes.
Just because I don't want to get everything...
I understand, Mr. Remedy, and I think you're quite, the billboard and the telecommunications get a little...
Okay, I just want to be, yeah, be sure that we're fair to everybody and our argument is considered when making the vote, and we don't get anything mixed up, so if that's okay, if we could maybe backtrack to the issue one and ask for comments and vote about your...
Sounds great.
In that case, issue one would be annexation.
Correct.
All right, any questions about the information he shared with us on the annexation? Any comments? All right.
If you don't know, if anybody wants to speak in favor.
There you go, that's what it's looking for. Is there anyone would care to speak in favor of the annexation recommendations from the chair?
Mr. Towton's going to come forth.
Members of the commission, my name is William Towton. I represent the Office of the City Engineer, 505 Travis Street, Suite 300, 71101. We have been working with the MPC, and the city engineer's office is in full agreement and compliance, and we agree with this action.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak in favor of this action? Anyone care to speak in opposition to this action that we're about to consider? Seeing none, we'll call for a motion for that particular item, item 19-341-C and 19-304-P annexation. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Burke, second by Ms. Smith. Please vote. Oh, no, that's not where we're going, there we go. All right, carries. Would you care to discuss and share with us the billboard?
Yes, sir. Currently, as I said, there are three unbuilt pre-UDC billboards. This amendment would allow those billboards to be canceled and surrendered to the zoning administrator for a one-to-one square footage credit towards the application of a new signed permit within 30 days of passage of this amendment before city council. Any new signed permit reissued under this provision would expire within 90 days of issuance. Any existing signed permit not surrendered within the 30-day period would become null and void as of August 27, 2019.
All right, sir. Question?
Yes. Jake, could you break that down into like a layman's term of just like an overview, you know, just like an elevator pitch of, this is what it's going to change, so I understand it?
So there's, there's just only three permits that are pre-UDC, two from Digivision and one from ACE. This would allow them to turn in those permits and be issued a one-to-one credit, so they could essentially take out new permits under the old code but for, and in a new location.
Okay.
And if they don't do it within 30 days, those permits go away.
So, but if we pass this, then those three, those two companies get, one gets two, one gets one, and they can go and take another billboard down?
They don't have to do that. They, this would give them the credits. They don't have to do that. They this would give them the credits.
Okay, so they could go and build those billboards where they where they were permitted to build?
Correct.
Right? And they would have how long to?
They would have 30 days to pull that permit or to swap that permit out if they so choose from when city council should they pass this. And then if they get the permit, then they have 90 days to construct it.
Okay.
Have they invested some money already on these billboards that are already built? That they're already?
Yes, sir.
If I may, just adding to Adam's comments. These were the permits that were issued prior to the May 15, 2017 enactment of the UDC. We, prior to the UDC, there was not a capital place. So prior to UDC, if you met the requirements of the ordinance and were able to get a state permit, you were allowed to erect a billboard. So these two companies came in before this happened and got the permits. At the time after the UDC went into effect, they had a desire to change locations for these billboards, but capital replacement had gone into effect. So therefore, they could not get permits to change locations. What this ordinance amendment does is allow only those three permits pre-UDC not to be under the capital replacement where you have to tear down a billboard or tear down two non-conforming billboards in order to erect a new billboard. I don't know if that made it any clearer?
No, it does. My my question is, it seems very familiar. Haven't we addressed this a couple of times? Like there's been an extension and then it.
Right.
You what happened to those extensions?
You as a board and the the industry is here today, you as a board directed, me as executive director, to come up with a solution to this problem. And this has gone on for a number of months.
Yeah, and I'm not and just, you know, I'm not suggesting that you guys did anything. I just want to be sure that we don't just continue to just address this over and over and over again. You should, I mean.
This is the end and I hope they will come up and share with you. But I have shared with them that this is this ends this. After this, and that's why it has an expiration date, after the July date if the council is so inclined, if you're so inclined to recommend and the council is so inclined to adopt, that there's a certain amount of time that you have to get the permit, a certain amount of time that you have to erect the billboard, and it's over.
Yes.
There's no more.
One more question, and I I promise you I'm not looking to be.
Not at all. I'm glad.
But what is different about when, because I believe you when you said you're the end, because you and I have we've not always agreed on everything, but I know when you say something, that's that's what you mean and you don't you rarely change your mind. But what's different about when you say this is the end and then when it was the end before when they were given?
Well, what's what's happening now is that the industry came together and we were able to formulate a compromise in order for this to happen. And here before, we were not together and therefore it kept continuing and continued on.
Okay.
But the industry, I feel comfortable. You never know until this is over. We are all together on one one accord to end this once and all because we have many things that we want to do in reference to improving the carrot billboard ordinance.
But you feel confident that this is not gonna be something in eight months, we're gonna see it again and we're threatening to sue this MPC and the city because there was a loophole. So you guys are really confident that this is.
We feel strongly, you know, Mr. Remedyes.
I just don't want you guys to be have to take your, because I know there's a lot going on, especially with the.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? The mic is now available for anyone from the industry to make any comments that you care to make relative to the compromise. I see some familiar faces out there. And we be anxious to hear some comments from you in an effort to bring this to closure.
My name is Stephen Keen, 2512 Swan Lake Road, Boja City 7111, CEO at one of the companies, Digivision. And and we've worked on this seems like two years and we've gone back and forth on all kinds of different solutions. What cap and replace, in summary, to try and put this in layman's terms, what cap and replace did to these two permits that we could have just turned in and and reapplied for a different location, cap and replace prevented that. And so what it what it essentially did was it taxed us. We would have had to erected a billboard at the location of the current permit just to then take it down so that we could, under the new code, put it where we really wanted it. And so Mr. Clark and the entire team has worked with us. We've worked with Lamar, who is here, and and ACE, and we've all come together. And and it is, if you read it, it does say if if it's not up by September 27, it's over completely. And so we can comply with that and we really appreciate everybody working so hard and so long and diligently on this. And I'll be happy to answer. Any questions you might have?
I just, again, wanted to, I I'm glad that and I think this shows the shift in the tide of how our administrative staff is really, you know, they're trying to work with everyone to for it to be a good.
Exactly.
Outcome for everybody involved and but I just, what I'm concerned with, which I know some of the other board members have shared, is that that not by intent but gets exploited by, we'll just press them and they'll they'll, you know, because we want them to have a backbone but still be able to work with everyone. And that's all that I'm, I'm I'm not saying I object to what's in front of us today, but please understand my only point is to say, this is it. This will not come back to our staff and take up, because when you talk to the staff about something like this, it's like, yes, we've, you know, because they they just takes up so many hours and so many meetings. And before they can even present it to us, it's just really, really taxing on them when they're. So I just want to be sure that everybody that speaks where that, for the record, you guys are, I will not come back and ask if we don't comply with this, we won't have to address this again, so.
Well, I can't speak for Mr. Grace, but I pledge that, you know, I'll have my billboard up by the deadline or you won't hear from me again.
Okay, very good. That's that's all that I'm asking, but I and I hate to sound argumentative. I just want.
No, I understand.
It just goes away forever and if everybody agrees to it, I just, I'm just, I sometimes.
Well, once and once again, this was really, you know, we we could put our two billboards up if you didn't pass this. It would just take $50,000 out of our wallet and it just didn't seem logical. And so the staff has helped us work through that process so that we don't. We're a local company. We're small. We've been in business two years and we don't need to spend $50,000 unnecessarily.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
So that's that's all the questions I have.
Anybody else?
Any more questions? Before you leave the podium?
Sir?
I said before you leave the podium, any of you other guys, would you care to make any comments? All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. King?
Good afternoon. Michael Grace. I want to operate ACE Outdoor Advertising. I live at 3515 East Lake Drive, Shreveport 71105. I appreciate the consideration that the staff's given me in keeping these permits alive and, you know, what's before you today. I don't know that, quite honestly, I don't know that I'll take advantage of this if it passes. I may just build my sign where it is. So that's where I stand on it. But thank you all for working with me and, you know, I never asked for this. I've never tried to rock the boat. I've always played by the rules. So thank you, Ms. Clark, and y'all do what you think's right. Okay?
All right, sir.
Anything else for me?
No, and and just so you know, as a board member, I'm I don't object to our staff sitting down and because there's so many things in the UDC that were unintended.
Yes, sir.
But it was just that we we'd heard about this for a couple of years now and it's kind of beat beat the staff down as far as if there's anything else that comes up with billboards, you know, it kind of dilutes the the conversation because it's kind of something that's been negative. So that's.
Yes, sir.
So we we don't have a problem with you guys coming back to the staff and they're willing to work. We just wanted to put this issue to bed.
Well, as y'all may know, it's a very competitive industry.
Sure.
I've I've accepted the deadlines as they have been put before me over the years. I've not tried to continue this or drag this on. All I've asked for was the same consideration my competitor was given and I've and I've been given that.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that and like I said, I don't know that I'll take advantage of this if it passes. So that's where I stand. Thank you all. Anything else for me?
I would just like to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to thank you all and I thank you, Ronnie, for asking all the questions and I agree with everything that you're saying and thank Mr. Clark and his staff for a job well done. I'd like to see teamwork.
Thank you.
Right, but as far as your deadlines, I won't be back for this, for the same issue. I I've accepted them as they are all along and I accept them today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else care to make any comments? Anyone in opposition to approving this particular billboard request? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please vote yes.
Motion to approve?
I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Remedyes, second by Ms. Smith. Motion is approved. And before we move on to the next one, I want to personally thank Adam and the entire staff because we toured you guys with this some time ago and we've been back and forth with this issue of billboards and to be able to sit down at the table as Mr. Remedyes alluded to a while ago and working it out is amicable to your point. It makes us look good, but more so, we're proud of what you're doing. And I'll say to those guys who are in the industry, I'm sure you are well aware that as we go down the road in the future, there're gonna be some things that are gonna take this business of billboards to the next level and I hope you guys are on board to help us when we get to that point, whatever that might be. Thank you. I see the head nods. Thank you for that. All right, Mr. Bailey?
Subcase C deals with wireless telecommunications. This new article and subsequent amendments would bring the city of Shreveport UDC into compliance with the city's code ordinances, mainly to become in compliance with federal laws and regulations. We're asking for a deferral till next month to allow the MPC staff to get in touch with industry leaders to get their comments on these changes. Back in February of 2018, we introduced it to them, but the city wanted to move forward with small cells. So these changes to the UDC, while looked at by the industry and commented a year and a half, has passed or close to. So we're just asking that you defer it to next month to get some feedback from the industry.
Sounds like a moving target right now, huh?
It will be.
Before we before we defer it, can I ask you a technical question? This is kind it's kind of down in the weeds. Who looks at these tower locations is probably sitting somewhere remote, St. Louis, California, whatever, and it's supposed to be in the right of way, okay? And they put their pins on a map and they send it out to the guy in the field and he goes, puts paint on the floor, puts a pin in the ground, says that's where a tower's gonna be. But if we know that that point is not gonna work in the real world, who do we get back with and say, hey, can you move that 25 feet? Because I know it doesn't fit in their scheme of overlapping because one of them is right out the front door of a business about four steps from the front door and there's a pin in the ground of where a remote tower's gonna be. See what I'm saying?
Well, that, I know which pin you're talking about.
Yep.
That was brought to our attention. We let the consultant know that as well as city engineering and they have removed that application to to put it somewhere else.
So that so get back with you then?
You can get back with me and then I would get back with.
Right.
The correct.
I mean, if it doesn't make sense, because you know that guy's looking at the overlapping and he's just putting pins on a map.
He's doing it based on propagation of where he thinks that it would give the best coverage area.
So just get back with you and city engineer. Gotcha.
Any other questions?
Motion to defer.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Corbin, second by Mr. Remedyes to defer and continue. Please vote.
I accidentally voted no, sorry.
Go back and hit it green. It'll tell you.
All right.
All right, Mr. Bailey. Thank you very much. That motion's approved to defer and continue. All right, as we move forward on the agenda, that concludes our public hearings. We'll move into old business committee chair reports. At this point, the standing president did not give me any questions for standing committees to respond to. New business, research. Any comments from the staff?
Well, let me do say, I I shared with you earlier that this could be a good time for me to introduce Mr. James Jamba. If you'll stand up for the ones that have not seen him. He is our newest planner. He's a community planner with a master's degree in community planning from Auburn University. We expecting great things from him. He will be working under the leadership of Mr. Adam Bailey and by the end of the week, we will have that final community planner. And what they're gonna do is provide us with extensive research in all areas that are that are affecting us and that we're dealing with on a daily basis in the MPC. And we're gonna provide you with that information. So you're gonna benefit greatly from this new unit. I had said upstairs, they are part of the super part of the team. We're gonna have three super sections, the zoning enforcement, the community planning, and the land use planning. So I thank you all. We'll hear great things when we come to this portion of research every month that you call.
All right, Mr. Clark.
Thank you very.
Young man, welcome to the team. I've already had a preview of kind of some of the work that you've been doing. It's way beyond my pay grade. So keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
He should get in good in Shreveport. He hates the Crimson Tide as much as everyone else.
Does he really?
Everybody from Auburn hates.
I was about to say that. I was wondering if anybody's gonna go football. You took it. That's good. I'm gonna leave it alone.
All right, Mr. Clark, any other comments?
Are we down to the directors?
We're down to the director.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Remedyes. People were beginning to panic thinking we were not gonna have a call. You told me you would be here and I never lost doubt. I just kept doing other things. But I just want to thank you for for showing up and I want to thank you for those comments you made earlier with the billboard industry. It's it's been a difficult process. It's taken quite a long time. And this was putting four people in the room that really were not crazy about each other and and coming up with a solution to the problem. So we thank the board for moving this on and we're very hopeful that the council will do likewise. And finally, because I was with you every time you said that, because I've had this nightmare for the the 10 months that I've been serving in this capacity. Finally, this can be over and we can go on to doing things that that are worth, not that this was not worthwhile, but finally going on doing things to make the city a much better place, which you desired and desire and share it with us that you would like. One more person. For 10 months, I have tried to do the job of the executive director and the zoning administrator. And although it's as fun as Mr. Corbin alluded to upstairs to where when the zoning administrator get a call, you could say, well, I need to check with the executive director and you could just turn to his side and say, what do you think? And he said, no. You turn back and said, the executive director said, no. But last week, I appointed a new zoning administrator and I want you to meet the new zoning administrator, Mr. Reginald Jordan. Although he is a he's a graduate of Southern University in mechanical engineering and Southern law school and his plans are to sit for the bar this summer. So he's gonna be able to, when you get mad and. When you get mad and want to talk about that zoning administrator, he will be the person that you will have the honor of talking to from here on out. And you can call me and be pleasant with me from here on out. I wanted to share that with you. We welcome Reggie, and I'm glad that, we're glad to have him, and we're looking for great things from him also. Next month, the, and Todd was standing outside the chamber, waiting on me today to make sure we don't have a conflict. Instead of the first Wednesday, we will meet the second Wednesday. That will be July tenth. July third is the first Wednesday, and that is the day that, the, the fourth would be the day that the county parish commission would meet. They sort of trumped us and said, this is their room, and they will have that meeting on July third, and we don't have to come on the tenth. But you will be notified, and the message will go out to you about the tenth. But I wanted to share that with you. Got some information about I forty-nine intercity connection. The House had approved a hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar amount in, for the construction of the I forty-nine intercity connection. It was waiting to go before the Senate. Once that is done, then hopefully, we will have information on when they will start going through all the necessary steps and acquiring right of way and possibly starting to the construction of the elevated I forty-nine interconnector. We don't have any update on Louisiana thirty-one, thirty-two extension. We have an MPO meeting Friday. We're supposed to have an update on the Louisiana thirty-one, thirty-two. And Kent Rogers from NL Card, and his staff will be here on July tenth to give you an update on everything that's going on with I forty-nine, I sixty-nine, and Louisiana thirty-one, thirty-two.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Is, is the, kind of like the billboard issue, is the argument about the intercity connector, is that over? Is, is that put to bed in?
To my understanding, that is over. They're just going through the necessary steps.
Okay, okay, so we won't have to hear about that anymore?
I think it's gonna be a pleasant meeting to come and share with you where, where they are. It, it, it has amazed me these ten months of going to, to the NL Card meetings that it takes so long for them to do anything in reference to highway construction. And the fact that, as you well know, the municipality across the bridge many times have, have had the upper hand on the city of Shreveport in getting projects funded. And more accurately, South Louisiana has always trumped North Louisiana in getting transportation funds made available. But they will just calmly give you an update, but for all practical purposes, they know where it's going. And that's not gonna change. At some point, because it periodically comes up, we, we sort of moved from the subject. We're gonna have the, the consultants to come back in and give a report on the Chars Neighborhoods project. I think that the, the climate is much better now. Just so you will be totally aware, it is my goal, everything that's happening in the city, that you are totally aware of it. They will come back and just share that and possibly get your favorable impression of the Chars Neighborhood Initiative. Something exciting, Sportran will have, by the end of the year, Sportran will have autonomous buses, and these are buses that drive themselves. And they're gonna be running the grid downtown. And I have gotten a pledge from Sportran that if you're courageous as I am, that the MPC board and select staff members will be the first ones to ride in the autonomous buses downtown. So, I mean, I hope you are great, brave. I'm sort of excited about the possibility of autonomous buses.
As long as I can wear a helmet.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
Has the city got that insurance policy?
The city got it well-injured. I was talking, I was at the state conference last, last week, and the, the consultants were saying that the city of Shreveport has the best transit system in the state, and I never realized that.
Yeah, De Niro, they do a great job.
They are, they are, they are most progressive. They're the most innovative. They do, they have the best buses, the more updated buses, the best transit system in the state.
Would that be the first in the state, the autonomous?
Autonomous vehicles.
Oh, wow.
So, I mean, they showed you that, that, that positive things are happening in Shreveport. They're a little slow, but positive things are happening, and Shreveport is doing a lot of wonderful things. And I just wanted to share those things with you. The July tenth agenda will, will be pretty heavy. There are like nineteen cases on the agenda, so I'm gonna make my, my comments short today so that you can leave. Hopefully, you'll come back on the July tenth, and you won't pay your colleagues back for not being here today, and we can take care of that much-involved agenda. And those are all the comments I have, Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion to start that meeting at one P M., please.
Sounds great.
Any additional comments, board members? Mr. Carvin has just made his comment, no?
I didn't get a second. Let me vote on it. Real quick.
What time is he wants to start?
One o'clock.
One o'clock?
Yeah. You have a second or not?
Careful.
You did one for one, for one meeting. Just one meeting?
All right. Hearing none, I want to, once again, welcome the new staff members, guys. We know you've been around for a little while, but you put your big boy, your big boy, on now. You'll, you'll, you'll learn those, some of the parts of the job that you'll be responsible for. And we know you'll represent us well.
Yes, definitely.
We know you will.
Get you ready to be a logger.
He can interpret that soup whenever he comes up. But at the same, I, I want to, I want to say one more thing, because when I run out the door, I'm driving straight to Baton Rouge, so if anybody wants to get out of here in a hurry, it's me. But I do want to say to the staff, Mr. Clark and your staff, and I'm glad this is recorded, it has just been a pleasure to come to meetings where the storm has passed over. We're working together. We're, we're agreeing and agreeing to disagree as we go through some of these issues that are brought before us. And at the same time, the staff upstairs, it appears to be working really, really well. You made some comment at lunchtime about a tour or something, and?
Yes.
So that we'll know who's who and what different ones are doing in our very near future. And I, I look forward to that, starting at the receptionist's desk out front and working all the way back through. So, from where I sit, thank y'all very much for what you're doing. And please, keep making us look good, because we hear a lot of it out on the sidewalks, good and bad. And thank y'all for making us look good. Anybody else?
Thank you, sir.
Did I get a motion?
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.